Well, yeah, I finally had to give up and go home and I heard the winning goal on the way home. All right, is the cameraman, Scott, how do I know if the cameraman is, has got the meeting on? It's blinking twice on that camera. Very good. I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please.
Belkey, here.
Belzak.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Seifert.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature from the audience. We added this to our agenda a few months ago in order to allow residents who were not able to sit through our whole city council meeting to address at us at the end of the meeting, but to address this early, please feel free to come up to the podium and address any issues that you have that you'd like to address to the city council. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak to the council? Then let's move on. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of June 3, 2013. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Then the roll, please.
Kenny.
Here.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The minutes have been approved. The next item on the agenda is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report, I attended a meeting of the Carriage Greens Homeowners Association last week. I had a very good meeting with them with regard to issues that were going on. It was, of course, it was Tuesday, which was a difficult day to have a meeting Tuesday night, but it was, I wanted to report that they were most pleased with the work done on Carriage Greens Drive, which was reconstructed this year, and they wanted to compliment Mr. Gombek and his staff for the minimal disruption, because that is quite a long street to repair and it, and it was delayed a bit by the rain. They were most concerned about homes in their area that are under foreclosure. There are a couple of homes in that area, one in particular, and we, I talked to Mr. Van earlier in the day and he gave me some more information and Scott gave me some additional information, and they seemed satisfied and pleased with that. All in all, it was, it was a good meeting. They're very happy with the progress of the city. I did share with them the potential plan for the Cass Avenue site that we talked about. They liked that idea very, very much. Thought that was a good idea because it meant we were moving forward and doing something versus just, you know, waiting until somebody bought the property.
Were they aware of the offer we had from a pharmaceutical?
I shared that with them. I told them that, I told them that.
We turned it down?
Yeah, and that we turned it down, and they agreed that another drugstore in Darien would not have been a good idea. And they, so they really did like the idea of the, of the reconstruction, the remodeling, if possible, with, while maintaining, you know, current owners or current renters in the facilities that they're currently at. So all of that was a good meeting, and I just wanted to report back that people there were quite pleased, especially with the services the city's providing them.
Thank you. Other communications to share? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had received a communication from a Pat Fleck on the 6900 block of Irish Court regarding noise, apparently landscapers, her neighbors' landscapers were out, and around seven o'clock in the morning, we checked in and they were within their right. And she was, she was, you know, disappointed we couldn't do anything, but I think she understood. Bonnie Reed on 1600 block of Claremont talked about speeding cars going down her street and not stopping at the stop sign at Exner. We've talked to the police department in regards to that. And this evening I received communication from Richard Kozic in the 3rd ward, that's all I got, about a pothole on Williams and Plainfield Road. Mr. Gombek has assured me we're gonna have that fixed on Wednesday. Thank you.
I don't hear, you don't hear too often about potholes in the city of Darien, so that, that's, that's good. Any other communications? Alderman Belkey?
Yes, there was an email from Tammy Holland on her. If everybody recalls, she's the main resident that was calling on the Crest Basin and, you know, really tried to push for, you know, beautifying that area. And so she did send an email to Dan thanking him, and it was passed along, so I know she's really pleased. I was going down the street on my way to work and somebody flagged me down and just said, "Thank you, it looks really good." So, and I agree, it does, it looks really good. And then on another matter, I had a resident stop me as well and thank me for, and the city that put up a sign by the high school that said, "Do not block sidewalk" along the high school there. And I wanted to know, I, they asked about the sidewalk extension from Claritin Hills to the ending, and I didn't know where that stood, but I knew, I know it's in the budget and everything.
As soon as school's out, it'll be August, actually school's out now, so July, July will be starting that one.
Great, thanks.
Alderman Marques?
One thing I forgot. Chief, I had a request from two residents in my area. Several years ago, we had these signs that we were able to stick in our lawns that said, "Drive 25, Keep Kids Alive." Do we have more of those?
That may be from the National Safety Council, possibly part of the Alive at 25 program. Let me check and see.
Could you let me know then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Alderman Kenny?
Mr. Van has reminded me, we did have a resident, Mr. Nemick on Hudson regarding one of the neighbors had a a boss, an RV, and they were concerned about it, and apparently that looks like that situation's all been, you know, rectified and taken care of.
Thank you. I received a communication from Bill Clump on Lake Ridge Drive regarding his experience with our, our Public Works Department, and in particular, Dan Gombek, and also mentioned Alderman Joe Marques, and the immediate response that he received regarding the, his retaining wall next to Ward Creek having collapsed. And he was so pleased with how well everything went, and he was also very pleased with you pressing him to file for the FEMA application, filling that out for reimbursement, because it, as he said, it didn't make him whole for the damage that he will have to repair, pay for, but it helped a great deal. So he was very pleased and wanted me to know how, how appreciative he was of all your efforts on that. If there's no other communications, I'd like to move to the mayoral report, mayor's report, and I have a proclamation today to honor a gentleman, a young man, and our resident of Darien, Sergeant Matthias Joseph Sanchez. And let me read that proclamation. "Whereas Matthias Joseph Sanchez was born to Joseph and Gloria Sanchez on September 28, 1986, and whereas Matthias Joseph Sanchez has a sister, Elisa E. Sanchez, and whereas the Sanchez family moved to Darien in 1998, and whereas Matthias J. Sanchez was a starting pitcher for the District 9 Little League Championship Team in 1999, and whereas Matthias graduated from Our Lady of Peace School in June 2001, and while attending Hinsdale South High School, Matthias was a pitcher for all three levels of their baseball team and was a member of the gymnastic team. And whereas Matthias graduated from Hinsdale South High School in June 2005, and whereas Matthias attended the College of DuPage and was a pitcher for their baseball team. And whereas Matthias entered the US Army in 2006 and was promoted to the rank of sergeant in December 2008, and whereas Matthias was stationed in Seoul, Korea, South Korea with the Defense Media Activity from 2008 to 2010, and whereas Matthias served his first tour in Afghanistan from 2010 to '11 with the United States Forces in Afghanistan, and whereas, on May 27, 2011, while in Korea, Matthias received an award which stated, "Your dedication to duty and service to the American Forces Network, Korean Technical Service Division, is greatly appreciated. Your willingness to go the extra miles to take care of your fellow soldiers, airmen, sailors, Department of Defense, civil and local national workforce are a true reflection of your leadership as a non-commissioned officer. Thank you for always being there for us." And whereas Matthias was served his second tour in Harat, Afghanistan, from 2012 to '13 with Echo Company, 91st Special Operations Civil Affairs Battalion, airborne, and whereas during his second tour, his unit worked with the Marines, and whereas in between tours, Matthias was with Headquarters Quarter Company, Headquarters Company, 95th Special Operations Civil Affairs Brigade, airborne unit, out of Fort Bragg, North Carolina. And whereas Matthias attended Army courses, the courses being Advanced Leaders, Airborne Basic, Armor, and Combat Lifesavers, and whereas Matthias received the following award coins: two BNFA Battalion Coin, Joint Chief of Staff Coin, Admiral Mullin, Secretary of the Army Coin, John Michael McHugh, Joint Service Commendation Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Joint Service Commendation Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Joint Meritorious Unit Award, Army Good Conduct Medal, Korean Defense Service Medal, Afghan Campaign Medal, Service Medal with Two Campaign Stars, NATO Medal, and Parachute Badge. And whereas upon return of his unit, Matthias will be stationed in Fort Bragg, and whereas Matthias will continue to serve his country until at least 2018. Now therefore, I Kathleen Weaver, Mayor of the City of Darien, do hereby proclaim the 17th of June, 2013, as Sergeant Matthias Joseph Sanchez Day in the City of Darien, and urge all residents to recognize the service Sergeant Sanchez has given and continues to give to his country. And I believe we can take a vote on that? We don't, well, let's, let's do, let's do a vote anyway. A motion to approve this proclamation. Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower. The roll, please.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Weaver.
Aye.
Corin.
Aye.
Regona.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Vanna.
Yes.
Thirteen ayes.
Very good. Sergeant Sanchez, would you come forward to receive the proclamation? And do we have any cameraman in the audience that? Matthias just shared with us that he's in town for just a few more weeks and then he'll be back on his way to Fort Bragg. And we just love the opportunity to recognize all of our, our service people and, and thank you for, for your service to our country. You do not have to stay through the rest of the meeting, so you are, you are welcome to, to leave. Thank you very much. Okay, let me give you that. I just wanted a little bit more fanfare, you know, what the heck. Yeah. They don't know the difference.
Claire. Claire's hanging in there.
Isn't that great? Look at all the people for supporting him. Yeah.
Boy, everybody that was here was here for him. I said for Claire and the lady from Chuck's.
Isn't that great? He was so nervous. Yes, ma'am, did you hear that? I don't get called yes, ma'am, very often.
You can go in front of Afghanistan, he's afraid of that microphone. Amazing, right?
Yeah, isn't that amazing? All right, let's move on. Under the mayor's report, we had the Darien Chamber update. Claire is with us this evening.
Good evening.
I'm glad you were able to take pictures, too. Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, I have the camera. I told Scott I always have the camera, right? Okay. Welcome new Darien Chamber members. We have Country Financial, Mr. Dave Hedgy. Country Financial is located at 737 Plainfield Road in Darien. Cass Avenue Motors located at 8404 Wilmette Road on Frontage, near Frontage Road. Everyone needs to check out all the luxury cars at CassAvenueMotors.com. We are very excited that Chuck's Southern Comfort Cafe has finally opened. Thank you to Chuck for hosting the Friends and Family Event, which was enjoyed by all. A grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony date will be soon announced. Thank you to the Wilton School of Cake Decorating for the wonderful grand opening ribbon cutting celebration last weekend. Join us for the Old Vineous Ribbon Cutting Ceremony on Wednesday, June 19, 5:00 PM. Old Vineous is located at 2601 75th Street, next to Miha Sienda. The Darien Chamber of Commerce Shop Local Shop Darien kickoff event will be held next Thursday, 5:30 PM at Home Run Inn. Darien Chamber member businesses will receive a special window decal and button at the event. We are inviting all Chamber members to participate in our monthly preferred deals. Darien residents can purchase a Darien Chamber Preferred Card, which can be used at participating businesses for preferred deals. This event will be a great opportunity for future members to join the Chamber and be part of this exciting Shop Local Shop Darien campaign. Register online for this event at DarienChamber.com. Chamber 101 will be held on July 24, 2013, 9:00 AM at Citizens Financial Bank. We invite all new and existing members to attend. Darien Fest. Darien Fest will be held on September 6, 7, and 8 at Darien Community Park. Sponsorship opportunities are now available at DarienChamber.com. Wristbands once again will be sold for $20 on Saturday and Sunday from noon to 5:00. The Third Annual Business Expo will be held the entire weekend. Come out and meet and greet Darien Chamber members. New this year is our pep parade. The parade will kick off at noon in the park. Judging criteria will soon be announced. Three dogs will be brought up to the main stage to receive their award by celebrity judges. Entries are now being accepted for Battle of the Bands and Darien Idol. For more information, visit DarienChamber.com. The Darien Fest entertainment lineup is as follows. Friday night, we will feature R&B and Motown. Kicking off the event, we have our gang, followed by the award-winning performing artist, The Moods. Battle of the Bands will be live during the day on Saturday. Our opening act Saturday evening will feature classic rock, beginning with Forget Hannah, followed by Aura. The Second Annual Darien Idol Live will be held on Sunday afternoon. Sunday is, Sunday evening will be Country Night, kicking off with The Redmans, followed by our very own Andrew Salgado Band. Chamber events coming up this weekend. Sears Outlet, located at 7415, is having a tent sale on Sunday, Friday through Sunday, and The Cottage, located at 1224 Plainfield Road, is hosting their Second Annual Fine Arts Festival from 11 to 3:00. Save the date. The Darien Chamber will be participating in the Town Hall Meeting on September 26, 2013, 7:00 PM at Carriage Greens. And this evening, we have a very special guest. We have Lisa Cortez from our new Chuck's Southern Comfort Cafe. Lisa?
Just wanted to share with you some interesting numbers from the week.
Lisa, do you want to pull that, that microphone up a little bit higher? There you go. That's better.
Okay. Some interesting numbers from this week. We opened on Monday with no advertising, no signage, no nothing. We did $75,000 worth of sales our first week, which is 60% of what our Burbank location did last week, and it's our busiest week of the year with Father's Day in there, mass amounts of catering for graduations and communions and birthdays, so Chuck is very happy. We sold more wine on Thursday night than Burbank does in one month. Sold 382 pulled pork sandwiches, 170 bowls of seafood gumbo for Father's Day. We did a buffet with no advertising, just people calling up. We had 351 reservations and had 351 people show up for the Father's Day buffet. And I know people aren't really happy, you know, not fans of buffets. We had one false fire alarm go off yesterday. We had a half naked man in our back garden, some kind of occurrence, not really sure what happened there. So we had a really interesting week. We have 150 employees. The patio will be opening by the end of the week. Food times are getting better. Our kitchen staff is getting more acclimated. I know people who've been there this, this past week have been, you know, our staff is all brand new. We don't have anybody over from Burbank at all. So we appreciate everybody's patience and everybody getting the wheels on the bus rolling and stuff, so. And thank you, guys. It has been a pleasure working with you guys and getting us going. We've really appreciated everything you've done for us, and Dan Gombek has really, really been great in, in getting all of our questions answered and stuff, so thank you guys very, very much.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Thank you very much. Yes, we all enjoyed.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes, we were, we were waiting with bated breath for that opening, so we're so glad you're, you're up and running. Thank you.
Yes, we're very excited.
Yeah, I was very impressed with Chuck's farm in the back.
Yes.
That is quite impressive. He, he grows all of the herbs that he uses in the kitchen.
And the veggies.
And the veggies in the back. Yeah, you don't want anybody tampering with that.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what this, whatever happened. We just knew that fire, ambulance, and police were out there Saturday night. And not really, we never really found out what happened, but that was the story.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was kind of funny, though. It just added to the mayhem that there was.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so that's Chuck's, though. Anything that can go wrong does, and we handle it.
Well, yeah, I, I had a conversation with Chuck Sunday morning, and yes, he is a, I, I.
He's a hyper guy.
Yeah, he's a hyper guy. That's a good word for it, yes, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the city clerk's report.
Just a few items, Madam Mayor. The city council meeting that was scheduled for July 1 has been canceled. Darien city offices will be closed on Thursday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day. And the next city council meeting will be held on Monday, July 15.
And let's move on to the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. I have one item. At the last city council meeting, we mentioned Dan and I would be meeting with a professional services company, Basic Architects, Shive Hattery out of Donner's Grove. We met with them last week regarding our Cass Avenue building. They had given us a proposal. I'll email to the council, but it was $3,250, under $5,000, so I was able to, to sign that and get them started. And basically, it's going to be a building analysis. They're gonna assess the existing conditions. They're gonna document their findings, and they're gonna prepare a report with some recommendations to us in, with the focus of can the building, you know, withstand a, what type of remodeling project? And members of the, probably one representative of Shive Hattery will attend the next city council meeting to present the report. So we'll send that out as soon as we get it, but we had a really good meeting, very interesting group to talk to, so we look forward to at least this next step here on this analysis.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Brian? Let's move on to department head information. Questions? Chief, you have a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I actually have two presentations tonight. One of them is gonna be a little briefer than the other one, so I'll do that one first. As many of you know, we, we are under federal mandate in the state of Illinois to come up with a concealed carry bill that will allow citizens to apply for a permit to carry a firearm concealed on their person. We have, from the date of signage or veto override of that bill, we, as a municipality, we have 10 days to enact any legislation that we deem appropriate as a city, or we lose the opportunity to do so. Our laws will be governed by preemption of the state, so whatever the state mandates are, that's what we'll be governed by. So I just wanted to touch on some of the small points of the bill. The resident, there will be a $150 residency fee and 16 hours of training, firearm training required for an applicant to apply for the concealed carry. There is no reciprocal agreement with other states. If an individual from another state wants to carry a firearm in Illinois, they will have to apply for the non-resident and pay a $300 fee and undergo 16 hours of training. Eight hours of that training may be waived based on prior military or something like that. In any event, that we need to start as a, as a governing body to give, giving some consideration to how we want to proceed and what, what we want to avail ourselves of, that we're under strict mandate that we can't engage in any legislation that preempts the, the larger law, though. So we can't do what Chicago did some years ago and say, "You can't own a pistol," and corporate city limits. That won't fly, so we have to frame something that, that's more amenable than that.
Didn't they, is, is this legislation similar to previous ones where they, they leave out the city of Chicago from this?
No, the only exemption that I'm understanding from the, the new bill, the wording of the amended bill is that Cook County will be able to retain the assault weapons ban and the extended magazine prohibition. An extended magazine is something that carries more than nine rounds in the magazine, extended clip. And so I think that, if I'm understanding the, the reading of the legislation correctly, those are the only provisions that Cook County and Chicago will be able to retain.
Now, as, as far as the assault ban, that is another issue that we would need to take some sort of action on, correct? I think Lieutenant Governor Sheila Simon sent something out to everyone that we need to act, we need to act and, and put something in place.
Whatever actions that need to be taken have to be taken within 10 days of the signage or the veto override. Other than that, it reverts to the preemption of the state. So if an assault ban is something that we're desirous of as a governing body, then yes, ma'am, it would have to.
I, I would like to, I, I personally feel we should have something in, in place for both issues, especially the assault ban, but other thoughts? I saw some heads shaking here, but is everyone in agreement that we need to take action? Alderman MacIver?
Well, what can we do? I mean, what limitations are we allowed by law to?
We're home rules, so we have more latitude, I believe.
Yeah, more latitude, but it can't be anything that preempts it. I think John Murphy would probably be the best person to have at the table on this. It can't be anything that preempts the, the larger law.
It's just, I'm sorry, chief, but as additional background, our attorney's firm is following this, and they haven't made any recommendations yet, only because everything is not final. But once, once that is final and we're in some review period, we may need to call
Special meeting.
A special meeting and have our attorney at that meeting to, you know, answer any of those, those legal questions, because some, some of the laws might, you know, might not, home rule might not be able to, to change, but we're following that now with the attorney's firms.
All right.
We specifically can't pass something that is more prohibitive for the concealed carry than the larger legislation.
So what's the purpose of having any kind of legislation? I mean, is it to broaden it?
You could narrow it. The assault weapons ban is one way of narrowing it. And it depends on where, where your head is on the assault weapons issue.
So that is something that is allowed?
It's my understanding, yes, ma'am, that it is allowed.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
We received two sample pieces. One was Denver, one was?
Cook County.
Cook County.
The Cook County legislation is one I actually helped draft, but it has not been challenged. So it, it has not withstood a, an appellate court or Supreme Court challenge yet.
What about Denver? Anything you know about Denver?
Denver, I believe, it has, in fact, withstood the challenge.
Okay.
Locally, in, in Colorado or a higher court?
I think it's the Colorado Supreme Court. I don't think it's gone to the federal Supreme Court.
The Denver, the Denver piece of legislation seemed to be more definitive in terms of its description of what was not prohibited. I know you worked on the Cook County one. The Cook County one, I had to go over and read it twice. The Denver one was, it seemed like it was a lot clearer to me what was prohibited, what was not prohibited.
The Cook County one is a little more vague, and we need to be laser-beam-precise on what we want or don't want. It makes enforcement for the cops easier, and it doesn't turn a cop into a lawyer in trying to generate an enforcement strategy should the situation arise.
So basically, what we're looking at to answer, I think, Alderman-McKayser's question, is how we might want to handle the assault weapon.
That might be one of them. How we handle the application process, whether it's, because it's going to be an unfunded mandate for an applicant to apply. I think the law says it applies to the chief executive, chief law enforcement executive of the municipality. And so should we get a rush on people, even though we only have twenty-five thousand, twenty-three thousand residents, should we get a rush? We could conceivably be fielding a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred applications, so.
Chief, are you saying that the fee would go only to the state, not to us?
I think the fee goes to the municipality, or a portion of the fee goes to the municipality.
Oh, okay. Good, okay.
But one of the things that I had suggested to Mr. Vanna was possibly a firearm registration for Darien. It would give us a couple of things. It would give us an indicator of, as to who within the city had firearms, number one, because the state police will generally, will not release the FOID listing. So there's no manner of us knowing who has guns and who may have weapons in the house that aren't, haven't petitioned to carry them. It also generates a revenue stream as well, so.
Okay. Very good.
Is that allowed?
I believe so. Registration for municipality is generally allowed. Where Chicago got into trouble was they prohibited certain weapons from being registered. You could register long guns, but you couldn't register a handgun within the city, and that's what made theirs too prohibitive.
Isn't legislation on a session, too? I mean, is this now...
Well, these bills are on the governor's table.
They're waiting for the governor's signature, then. Right.
He can veto, he can not sign, and there's some override provisions, so that's why it's not finalized.
July ninth deadline.
July ninth is the day. Yes.
Mrs. McGinn asked for an extension to August nine today.
And I believe she got it.
I just looked. I don't see that she got it.
You know what? I thought I read that she did get it, but I could be wrong.
I thought they got it, and they weren't going to allow them to have another one, is what I thought I'd heard.
Well, they gave her, they gave, she asked for a extension, they gave it to her, but they won't give another one.
Right.
Yeah, after that date.
So Brian, are we going to, are we going to look to John's office to help us deal with this?
Yeah, most of the municipal councils of government, you know, Illinois Municipal League primarily, the other one, Kathy, hit a blank, the other one that you get information from the council of governments.
Oh, yeah, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus.
Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. You know, they're all sending us information also, but John Murphy's firm is as involved in this. And, yeah, once we have something specific, we'll hustle along with his firm and move that to the council with, you know, whatever, again, discretionary items the council has, whether it's fees, whether it's certain types of weapons, but we'll have that all, you know, better ironed out because the legislation will be actually final.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Go ahead.
Second presentation is dealing with scheduling and allocation of resources. There was a question posed about how we allocate resources and what's enough. To start, I'd like to ask for some dispensation. One of the things that was asked is that we discuss percentages. The problem is if only Darien residents, and certainly Darien residents have a right to know, and you folks as a governing body have a right to know how many officers we have on a particular shift, but the good citizens in Darien are not going to be the only ones who are listening to this or who possibly have access to it. And so what I'd like to do is discuss generalities tonight, and if anybody needs to know specific numbers for specific days or anything like that, then I can certainly provide them, but I'd like not to discuss specific numbers on a specific shift tonight because it does have the potential to co-opt our enforcement strategies.
Yeah, I thought we were crystal clear on that fact, frankly, to be honest with you, that we were not going to discuss numbers of officers on shifts.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was okay with everybody, that's all. I'd like to refer back to the four points that we set during goal-setting for, as far as our goal for the department in terms of scheduling and allocation, and it was under point D, staffing and allocation, and staffing, allocation, and scheduling. Point one was conduct a workload and data call distribution analysis to determine a formula for allocation and reallocation of resources. Determine that the best means for allocating resources was not to staff all three shifts with the same manpower. Based on that decision, we implemented a power shift, which reduced the number of officers when the call demand was lowest, and applied those officers to a portion of the day when the call demand was greatest. And then the third, fourth thing we did was we split the detectives into two separate shifts so that we had a wider range of coverage, so that prior, previously, the detectives worked nine to five or ten to six, and so if a detective was needed after those hours, then it was all overtime. And so what we did is we had a, if we believed that our detectives have a certain level of expertise, which we do, we believe that they do, then we wanted that expertise to be spread out over a wider period of the day. So that was the way that we changed the allocation in general terms during the goal-setting and budgets. So what I wanted to talk about tonight is the basic philosophy behind our scheduling The policies that I'll talk about are sanctioned by some of the premier governing and oversight bodies in law enforcement. The IACP is the International Association of Chiefs of Police, ICMA, PERF, the Police Executive Research Forum, U.S. Department of Justice, COPS Office, it's a community-oriented policing services. And ultimately, what happens is the determination is made, the schedules are best written for what's likely to happen most often, not for what things might happen intermittently. For instance, in an emergency room, the...
Chief, I'm sorry, one thing, just to interject. I think, you know, you're going to cover a variety of items. If the council has questions along the way, I would suggest you ask it that. No need to wait till the end, so you can hit it as you're talking about things, if that would be fair.
That's fine with me if anyone wants to interject a question. Thank you. Go ahead.
So if you have an emergency room, an emergency room is recognizably, for anyone who's ever been to an emergency room on the weekends, it's the worst time. When I was younger, my kids would always get hurt on a Friday or Saturday, and so you wind up spending the entire weekend in an emergency room. But emergency rooms staff heavier when it's likely to be most busy, and those are life and death issues. They don't staff the same way on a Monday or Tuesday as they staff on a Friday and a Saturday. And so essentially, we've done the same thing. We've looked at where our call demand is the greatest, and we're looking to establish the means to put officers on the street when the demand is the greatest. We've staffed using a workload analysis. What the COPS newsletter will tell you, the COPS, Community Oriented Policing Services, will tell you that there are four essential ways that people look at staffing and allocation. And the newsletters pretty much indicates, as well as a significant body of study, that the workload analysis is the best way. What we used to use was a minimum staffing level. There was no way to confirm why we used those numbers that we used for minimum staffing. There was nothing scientific about it. There was no data to support it. It was basically the subjective thought process of the individuals who selected it. What the COPS Office says and most other governing bodies is that minimum staffing is the absolute worst way to determine staffing allocation, because what it does is it puts fewer officers on the street when there should be more and more officers on the street when there probably should be less. And so that's why we chose the workload analysis as opposed to another form to measure how we would reallocate staff. The primary policing function, or the function of a police department, is to respond to and to prevent crime. At the cornerstone of this philosophy of preventing and responding to crime is management and accountability. Managing of resources and being accountable for crime, disorder, management of your resources. The second component of that management accountability model is understanding that we, as the police department, can have an impact on most crime and disorder, if not all. We may not be able to eliminate it. We certainly, we won't be able to eliminate it, but we certainly have the capacity to displace it, reduce it, or send it someplace else. The fourth, the third component of that philosophy is that not only can we have that impact, but we have a moral and a professional obligation to do so. So that's essentially what frames our philosophy. The 911 call volume gives us the data that supports that philosophy. It tells us where our citizen demand is going to be greatest. The call distribution tells us where the calls are occurring and what time of day they're occurring. If we know those two things, then we can manage our resources, not just manage where the crime is likely to occur and be able to respond or prevent it, but we can also identify what to do with our officer's discretionary time. Now discretionary time is not a bad word. Discretionary time is simply that time that is not dedicated to responding to a 911 call. In Darien, as in most places, about thirty-three percent of our time is dedicated to the response to 911 calls. Everything else is pretty much discretionary time, with the exception of quarter, vehicle maintenance, and things like that. So what the job of the supervisor is, is to look at where that discretionary time is now and figure out the best way to allocate those resources to prevent crime and disorder and to serve the public. Sometime, the discretionary time is community engagement. Sometime, the discretionary time involves prevention of a crime pattern, a crime trend, or miscellaneous incidents, damage to property and mailboxes, burglaries to the motor vehicles, pursuing offenders that are known to us. And so those are the kind of things that we're looking to do with the discretionary What we learned is that days and afternoons have far more calls than the midnight shift. And if we don't deploy officers to meet that response, we're doing a disservice to the officers and to the citizens. So if I get forty-six or forty-seven percent of my 911 calls for the day on the afternoon shift, and I have the same number of officers on that shift as I have on the midnight shift where I get four and a half percent, I'm doing a disservice to the officers who have to respond to those calls on afternoons, and I'm doing a greater disservice to the citizens who are waiting for a response. In addition, I'm doing a greater disservice to the citizens because I don't leave those officers on the afternoon shift ample opportunity to engage in preemptive proactive policing. Any questions so far? So what our strategy has done, and I want to be clear, this strategy does not account for injuries or illnesses or FMLA or anything. There's no way that we can possibly hire enough police officers to ever take that into account. What the result is, is in there's more overtime incurred during those times where we have a lot of people on FMLA or injured during the course of their jobs or just off sick. So there's no way to staff for that. What this does is what happens most often. We don't have everybody off on FMLA or injury the entire year. There are just periods of time when people get hurt, people have babies and things like that, and we lose officers for those reasons. And so at that, during those time periods, our overtime goes up. But by and large, the philosophy has done this. It's placed more officers on the street when the demand is greatest. It places fewer officers on the street when the 911 demand call is at its least. Fewer occasions occur when officers get called back to work. It reduces overtime, and it allows for that discretionary, the allocation of that discretionary time to get officers to doing other things proactively and to preempt crime. Summary, summarizing, Darien has moved from an outdated method of scheduling and allocating resources to one that is sanctioned by most of the governing bodies, if not all of the governing bodies that have oversight and the policy and think tanks that govern law enforcement. Darien is properly staffed to handle emergency calls from residents and assist senior citizens because we've changed the allocation. We put on senior citizens officers, we put on, actually, they're called elder services officers. We've implemented a task force. We're responding different to the Park District, things like that, the Darien Community Park. One of the other things that this has done is given scheduling flexibility to the supervisors. We have not, at any juncture since we've implemented this, told a sergeant he couldn't hire back overtime or that he was obligated. What we've asked the sergeants to do is simply this. Instead of using an outdated, untested, subjective formula for staffing or identifying minimums or maximums, what we've said is, take a look at the data, take a look at what's going on currently, whether it's an event or a scheduled event or something else. Take a look at the weather, take a look at the officers you have, and whatever you need, that's what you have. If you have an event that requires you to have X number of officers on the street and you need to call in additional resources, do it. By the same token, or the converse is, if it's three o'clock in the morning and the call volume is flat, and it's been flat as a predictable trend, there's no point in calling in additional officers to do nothing or to look for preemptive stuff for them to do. So it gives the supervisors enormous flexibility. And as I said, we've not, in one instance, told a supervisor, "You can't do it." We've asked them to quantify and justify what they've done if they've asked for additional resources. We've asked them to operate within the philosophy, but we've not said, "No, don't hire back or don't put on the resources that you think we need." Essentially, what we're asking them to do is measure this for yourself, and if you think you need it and can quantify it and justify it, then do it. And that's the merit of this system because it's based on the data. We're asking them to look at the data, look at what's going on in the city right now, look at what you need, and then allocate for what you need.
Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
When did this actually fully go into effect? The reshifting and the duties to the supervisor and...
You mean the power shift, you mean?
We started the power shift late last year. I think it was September, October, but we actually implemented the full-blown accountability strategy in January of this year.
Chief?
Sir?
Schedules usually cycle, you know, twenty-eight-day cycles.
Yes, sir.
How do you take the midnight shift if you have a low percentage of volume at that time? How do you incorporate that with the twenty-eight-day, you know, rotation?
That's a good question, Alderman. What we do is every twenty-eight-day rotation, when the schedule is made up by the supervisors, is created by the supervisors after the officers apply for their regular days off and any other elective time that they're interested in, we take into consideration training days, training and what have you. And then the officers who are rotating to the midnights, we take two of those officers and apply them to the power shift, one or two of those officers, and apply them to the power shift. And so the power shift is a shift between three and eleven. The afternoon shift is three to eleven, but the power shift operates from seven till three.
Okay.
Sir?
Chief, earlier this evening, you were talking about how you work with other governing bodies within the city of Darien, who you get information from them with regard to special events and scheduling. Is that something that's new, or have we always done that? I thought that was always information that our police department received when we scheduled.
No, this is new.
It's new in that we formalize the process, but I'm about a hundred percent certain that there was an exchange of information before. And I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that everything that we do is brand-new. Some of the things were in place, some of them, what we've done is formalize them and make them an integral part of our decision-making process. And in that regard, they are new, but certainly there was an exchange. One of the things that Alderman-McKayser asked about early on was how we exchange information between other municipalities and jurisdictions. Well, that's always taken place, but now what we've done with our crime analysts is we sought to formalize that arrangement. Sergeant Shiree oversees that process, and he's in the process of helping the crime analysts formulate those relationships that will allow for a formalized exchange of information so that when we're looking to track burglaries to the motor vehicle or residential burglaries, it doesn't stop at the borders of Darien. We can look for a much wider trend if we have those formalized agreements in place. Thank you.
Alderman, it's time for...
Just a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I sort of brought the issue up, and I appreciate your presentation, but I guess my question was more directed and being sensitive to that we don't want to use numbers and things like that. Maybe a year ago, you said both city council meeting and at the police committee meeting that we're going to continue to staff at X but work with Y. We all know what those numbers are, I think.
Yes, sir.
Right. So, and then we introduced the power shift. I don't have the data to back it up, but it seems like a reasonable idea. So, and then we also have the community park policing. So what does that do with X and Y? I mean, I know we didn't add officers.
Well, we actually do, we do add an officer because we have at least, we have a couple of officers for the power shift, so...
So we increased that? Now we have more officers on the street than we used to during that period?
We should have more officers. Now, here, again, I can't speak to FMLA or people who pull up lame.
No, I'm talking about the people actually on the street on any given night.
Generally, the strategy should have more officers on the street on the afternoon shift. Yes, sir.
All right. So during the power shift, we have more officers on the street than we used to have on the street?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that the Darien Community Park, that doesn't affect that? Because I know there's always a squad car there, sometimes I see two there.
Well, see, well, if there's two, they're either in the process of relief or they may just be collaborating on something, I couldn't tell you, but there aren't two assigned there. There's only one that's assigned there. Now, and here again, when we talk about the responsibility to respond to and prevent crime, we know unequivocally that each year at this time of year, without some intervention on the part of the police department, there's going to be a certain level of disorder at the Darien.
Are those people going somewhere else or are they just not, or are they going away all completely?
Which?
The people in the community park, are they going away completely or are they just going somewhere else?
Well, some of them are going away completely, some of them are going someplace else. Now, one of the things that we've done is we've collaborated with the management at McDonald's because what we found out is when we applied, we call it the balloon effect in the enforcement community, is when you squeeze the balloon one place and the air goes into another area part of the balloon. Well, that's the same thing happens to that in criminal and chronic disorder behavior. So some of those people were drifting over to McDonald's on Plainfield, and so we started to work with the management over there to see what we can do to assist them and prevent them from that from becoming a trouble spot.
Okay. But I just want to make sure that I understand. So during the power shift, we actually have more police officers on the street than when we were with staffing at X?
Yes, sir.
But would work with Y?
Yes, sir. Now, here again, here again, that's the way it's supposed to work, but if five, if three or four or five people pull up lame, then that means we're calling people in to work on overtime.
And we're calling them in though?
Yes, yes.
All right.
If, let me say that. If the strategy warrants it, when, if it's raining cats and dogs or it's, we're in the middle of a storm, we may not call them in. If there's, if it's eighty-five degrees out and the streets are dry and it's likely to be a busy night, then certainly the sergeants have the latitude, either way, the sergeants have the latitude to say yea or nay.
Even like during the three to three in the morning to seven in the morning, we're still working with X?
We work with X.
Or staff with X?
No, we're not, and I think that's the key. We don't have a minimum or a maximum. What we're doing is.
Well, I'm coming off the, you know, the mental thought, we've had X but we'll work with Y, which there was a number.
No, that, we've eliminated that process altogether.
So we're not staffing X anymore?
No, we're not. We're staffing based on need now.
So the number could be below X?
It could be below X, but it depends on the need, and the sergeant is the one who determines that.
Could be significantly below X?
I can't tell you what significantly is, but.
Half?
Not necessarily. It may, I think the key is.
I'm a little confused, I'm just clarifying in case anybody else is confused. You're asking about the, I think the power shift and where we're at there. And then the second question, I think, is at four in the morning. Is that the second question?
Well, my first question is, we all agreed, we were told we were going to staff with X but work with Y, and I think everybody on the police committee.
No, that's not, that's not at all what we agreed.
That is what we discussed.
No.
Our police committee and the city council.
We got away from that whole philosophy because of the analysis.
But since we can't use numbers, we gotta, we have to assign a value to it, right? So if, and that's fine if we get away from X and Y, but I want to know where in comparison are we to X and Y?
Why?
Are we lower, are we higher?
Why? Why do you need to know that?
Because I sit on the city council, I think I'm entitled to know that.
Is it perception maybe out there?
Well, I'm thinking actual numbers. I mean, you know, how do we compare to other cities? I mean, that's one way to look at it, I suppose.
Well, one of the things I can tell you is that no city staffs the same on the midnight shift as they do on the day and the third.
Wouldn't make any sense.
Afternoon shift, absolutely. When we talk about other cities, most other cities have greatly reduced a lot more than we have, and I think that if you look around to our adjoining cities, very few people have the same staffing as they had ten years ago.
I would agree with that.
And so I think we've pretty much stayed pretty close in terms of actual bodies. I do recognize, and I don't have the figures available tonight, but I do recognize that we budgeted for one number, but, and speaking to the deputy chief from a historical perspective, we've never attained that budgeted number or rarely attained that budgeted number. So what I can say is this, Alderman, that the most prudent way to allocate resources is based on need rather than having a number that's unquantifiable. The maximum and minimums that we used previously, before we were able to really dig down into the data, had no merit. Those maximums and minimums were subjective.
But there's gotta be a maximum and minimum, because if there's no maximum or minimum, then in theory, we could have no police officer on the street.
Well, no, that's not a viable option.
I think we have three beats, right?
Pardon me?
We have three beats?
Yes, sir.
Are we always staffing all the beats?
Yes, sir.
All the time?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
And we're never in a position where we call somebody else in from other cities?
Well, that's part of the, I mean, they call us for help and we call them for help. Yes, sir.
Is that because of the particular?
I'm sorry, can I finish? Can I finish? I'm sorry.
The question you're asking is, do we ever call in just to cover our city? Do we have to call in other police departments? That's what you just asked.
No, no, the answer, not to, not to cover our.
But every city does.
No, we've called in situationally, if we are overwhelmed by an incident at a particular time, certainly we call in for reciprocal aid at that time, but in order to cover our beats, no, we've not called in anybody to cover our beats.
Would be to cover like a routine issue?
It may be to, if, for instance, if I have all the cars that are available in Darien tied up on two traffic accidents and there's a domestic call that comes in, conceivably we, if no Darien unit was available, we could have to call in for Woodridge or Westman or one of the other sister agencies.
I guess I'm just not very comfortable with the no minimum, no maximum, because again, in theory, you could decide, well, there's no activity between the hours of four-thirty and five-thirty in the morning, so we don't need any police officers on the street.
Well, I mean, I don't think that would ever be the theory because we still have the same job to respond if a citizen does call and to prevent.
What if two citizens call? Are we gonna have the staffing for that?
Here again, Alderman, I think that the key is, is allocating or scheduling based on what occurs most often. Let me give you an example. Thursday night, this past Thursday night, there were no calls on the midnight shift, none, not one.
Okay.
So should, under the theory of staffing just for that, what you said would be zero. No, that's not the theory. The theory is, is that we know that there's a certain potential for crime, we know that some citizen may call, we usually have averaged about 1.3 calls a night between three and seven. So we're staffing for that, for that eventuality. And that's what a schedule should do, staff for what we can predict, what's likely to happen.
So you're always staffing for potential, that's really what you're saying?
If it's predictable, it's preventable. And so we're staffing for what we know that we can predict. Certainly, there's gonna come in an anomaly where we can't predict it or we didn't. If we had fifty cops on the street, there could conceivably be an anomaly where we couldn't predict for it.
I think, Alderman MacEas, I think what you just mentioned was we schedule for.
Based on data.
On data, not, you didn't use predictability.
Well, our data, the data we have, the data the chief has collected has.
Correct.
Has set, we have ideas about when our, we know when our busiest times are, we know when our least busier times, but we always know that there's a potential for things. We know there's a greater potential for calls between three o'clock in the afternoon and one o'clock in the morning, so we staff for that.
Yeah, that's correct, sir.
We know there's less potential or chance of getting an abundance of calls between one o'clock or three o'clock, 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM, so we staff differently for that. So there's a certain degree of staffing based on the potential, but it's based on data.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Alderman Belkey?
So I have a question. If the sergeants are basically accountable for their own schedule and there's no maximum or minimum, who is overseeing to make sure that their judgment is kind of consistent with policy, I guess?
Well, for scheduling, both the deputy chief, myself, and one of our more astute sergeants are, Sergeant Shere. However, for calling in overtime, the sergeant has the absolute single latitude. If his, if a sergeant's schedule, say the afternoon schedule that's working right now, two people get sick and decide they need to go home, the sergeant has the absolute latitude to make a determination on how many people he needs to call in to fill the void, if there's a void.
Okay, but there was guidelines before that, so they're just more on those off-the-cuff situations where they need to figure out if they need to bring somebody in for OT or not?
Two things. Number one, the guidelines are now driven by data, information that's quantifiable, and two, it's more flexible because it allows a sergeant the latitude to decide what he needs rather than some unquantifiable numeric value.
But chief, there is a period also when that power shift, you might have mentioned this, so if you did, I apologize, but we're getting a long discussion, so I'm starting to get some of the questions again, but at the end of the power shift, if there is an incident happening, the sergeant certainly, and they'll do this, they'll hold people over in the power shift. So you have that period, if there's a concern, you can still hold them over. So that takes care of, you know, some of that time that typically is not known to be busy, not statistically, but if you have something occurring, potentially occurring at that time, the sergeants could and will hold people over from the power shift also.
And they have done it, done it in the past, in the recent past. Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Maciver?
I guess the bottom line is, since the changes have been implemented to the staffing, have there, has there been a decrease in level of service to the residents? Has there been, you know, an increase in crime? Has there been an increase of safety concerns for either the residents or the officers? I mean, really, that's what it comes down to, is are we still providing superior police service to our residents?
The answer to your first two questions is no, there's not been a decline in service. No, there has not been an increase in crime. The cop side of me says if the council would approve me to have twenty-five more cops, I'd say, yes, would you please give them to me? That's the cop in me, okay? The manager in me recognizes that there is a finite budgetary restriction, there is, that I have to do two things. Number one, if I'm asking for anything additional than what I have, make sure that every cop that we have on the street right now, working, is doing everything that we need them to do from an administrative, from an operational, from a tactical standpoint, from a logistical standpoint. And the other thing is, is make sure that we could not do more with less safely.
Just one final, I'm not gonna barrage on this, but, you know, I have issues with no minimum patrol on the street. I always thought that patrol was the backbone of any police department, not data input. So I do have some serious concerns when there's no set minimums as to the number of patrols for a city the size of Darien, because I think, I think the residents deserve it. It's not that any, it's not that nothing happened between, you know, midnight and five in the morning, it's that something could variably happen between midnight and five in the morning. So if there's no set minimum, no guidance other than, let's just see what happens based on data.
That's not, that's not.
I think you've misapplied or misunderstood or mischaracterized what I said. What I said is the sergeants are accountable for the crime and disorder conditions during their shift. So if the sergeant recognizes that there is a certain potential, then he is going to staff according to that potential. If there is in fact a problem, he is going to staff according to that problem. So there is, is not, it's not a matter of not being a minimum, we just haven't set a minimum. And I think that that's the key, that we're operating based on need as opposed to unquantifiable subjective numerical values. That's the only difference.
I understand that, but the need could be zero, and I'm not comfortable with the need of zero.
It's never gonna be zero because that sergeant is tasked on a daily basis with understanding the crime conditions. So burglaries to motor vehicles, criminal damage to property, just general patrol would not allow the sergeant to go to zero. So that's not gonna happen.
I wouldn't be comfortable with one either.
It's not, it's not gonna be one.
Chief, there is a number, you know, again, the difficulty here is trying to understand numbers and we're talking philosophies at the same time. There are certainly a number that I believe even at our least, we haven't gone under.
We've not, that's true.
There's a certain number, and I could tell you, you know, there's always officers on the street and there's enough officers that the sergeants have determined to meet that need, but without going into that, I could tell you, there'll never be zero.
And let me.
There is some number there, chief, that really, again, there's a number that the sergeants have not gone under on any particular shift.
Absolutely not.
Specifically, the slower shift.
Absolutely not.
The busier shift, again, we're talking about service levels, obviously, when you have more police on at busier times, we've increased service level. And I think managing people in this discretionary time you're talking about is what allows us to, you know, have elder service officers, get back to the K-9 unit, get back to the special park patrol. So I think that, you know, that is showing us how we're able to do more by managing this discretionary time. But again, just so the residents, I understand Alderman Seifert's point, but there's never a time where we're at zero officers, nor would we ever be at zero officers, nor some number, you know, close to that.
There's never a time when we're gonna be at zero, there's never a time when we're gonna go to zero. Some of the things that, about eight weeks ago, we were having a rash of burglaries, I think there were six burglaries to the motor vehicle. We had a very good idea of who was engaging in them. Even though it was on the midnight shift, the sergeant saw the need and said, look, I need a couple of extra bodies or some extra bodies to follow, because we had a good idea of who the offenders were, and we were basically put together a strategy to follow the offenders from the point that they left home until they committed a crime. And so there's never a point when it's zero, but we're staffing based on need, we're allocating resources based on need as opposed to.
One, I'm sorry, just maybe this will help, maybe not, but one thing underlying here that we're somewhat dancing around is because there is, you know, there has been a push by the police union and some of the officers demanding the number of five minimums on every shift, and they've done that in writing, I've shared that with the council. So we are getting, you know, again, during the police committee, the chief did talk about change and different things, and Dan Gombach can remember when he was here, when he started here a number of years ago, and he went through a number of changes. Getting through that, you know, is not, is a bit difficult because it's not always accepted by everybody. So I think while we're talking about this philosophy, we are getting the push, and, you know, no secret, from some of the officers and/or the union, and their position is, we should have a set number of five. And there's been nothing substantiated of why that's a good number. Now, we have done that historically, and for a number of years, we've been asked to quantify and determine. I could remember years since the police committee got started, the number of officers or the number of officers on shift has been a question. And from my perspective as manager of the manager of that department, I finally have something that we really have found that could give the city council, I think in the public, really better information and better use of our resources than we have had in the past. And that's my observation, but I don't want the residents to think that we're at a small number, that we're not gonna have police able to respond, because there's been incidents, and we've talked about this, where if the chief had ten on a shift or five on a shift, that wouldn't be enough. And we certainly, as chief mentioned earlier, are not gonna plan or staff for that. But you have people that would like us to staff for that and plan for that, and there's certain benefit they derive if we have minimums that are just really an arbitrary number. So again, I think the public has the right to know as we're going through this and the chief's explaining it, we are getting resistance from some of the officers and the union who bluntly want more people on the street. And I can't, I can't say that they're not talking to residents and conveying that to them. That's why when Alderman Seifert had sent this to me, I thought this was really a great opportunity to come back and talk about really what we talked about during the goal-setting session, and now we've had a time to implement it, because I could tell you, I've seen the number of the information from the sergeants, and I think they've done a great job in taking this concept and philosophy now that you and John are really pushing and doing it. And it's a little different than they're used to.
Yes.
But certainly, you know, I've seen, I've seen that, and I know, you know, we've recently promoted a sergeant, Sergeant Stock, he's really taken this seriously, and he's talked to you about scheduling. And I think, no matter, you know, who we are, our goal here is the same. And again, without getting to your specific question of being a zero or that number, other than that, I feel very comfortable, and hopefully the citizens will, they're able to watch us and understand that.
Alderman Belkey?
So is there a way to, since there's so much statistics out there, to take a sample maybe of a month long to show maybe the council what the numbers actually were of staffing?
I actually did that, and we thought better of trying to burden the council with numbers. I would be happy to send it. I'll tell you what I did. I took a sampling, a one-week period timeframe, over about eleven, about nine months, the same week, and compared it to one another. And it shows essentially two things, that the trend is absolute, the midnight shift accounts for fifteen percent of the total day's call volume. The period between three and seven in the morning, 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM, account for 4.5 percent of that time, which means sixty-eight, seventy percent of the midnight call volume occurs before two in the morning.
Well, I guess I'm.
Let me finish, let me finish. And the afternoon shift accounts for about forty-seven percent, and the day shift accounts for about thirty-five percent of the call volume across the board. And this is the trend that I've tracked since I was able to gather the data.
I guess I was thinking in terms of the numbers of officers in all the shifts, not, not statistically, percentage-wise, just how many officers, you know, basically at the end of the day, actual were on-
Why would that be important?
Well, I guess if there was a perception of five being the number before, then we can look at the trend to say, well, you know what, even though we don't have a minimum, it hasn't dipped below, you know, five anyway, or something.
I think that we have to get away from that concept if we're going to be effective managers, because as long as we are willing to knuckle under to saying, we have to have that many, then the data doesn't mean nothing, mean anything, then basically what we're saying is, the subjective idea of a group of people who can't quantify the data is what we're going to schedule by. And if, nobody would do that, not one business entity anywhere would do it. The cops don't do it in big cities, the cops don't do it in small cities.
Yeah, I don't think the point would be to change the theory, I think the point would be just to feel better of that number, because it is a different change, you know, a mindset.
When you, when you say feel better, Alderman, I guess I'm looking for-
I mean-
Who are you trying to make feel better?
The council.
Okay, all right.
So when they get questions, I guess they can explain it instead of, you know, having to come to you all the time.
Alderman McIver?
I guess, you know, from my perspective, I see that the chief has put science behind staffing. They, they put together what sounds like a 28-day plan on staffing, and it can, it, it's not necessar- it has some fluidity to it based on things that may come up that are unscheduled, and there's support available for when there's a need. It's kind of like those, whatever, 100-year reins that Dan has to work with in Public Works. You can't, you know, it'd be great if you had, you know, during those certain conditions where, you know, it's, or the snowstorms, or whatever. You don't necessarily have all the people to handle these, you know, spikes in activity, but, you know, you deal with them as you need to, and, you know, I, I guess, I haven't received a single resident complaint about this particular, any changes. No one has contacted me, no one has talked to me, no one has expressed any concern regarding their safety or lack of, of, you know, police presence. You know, I drive around, I see the police officers, I've had a call on behalf of my mom over a certain situation, we had to wait a little while, they asked specifically, was it an emergency? I said no, maybe took 20 minutes to get someone there, but it wasn't an emergency, it was more to file a police report. So, you know, I guess I just haven't seen anything, unless there was, like I said, a spike in crime, criminal activity, you know, I guess, I don't, I don't know how to run a police department, I think that's why we hire a professional, experienced police chief to do that. And, you know, he was tasked with trying to bring efficiency and new processes to our police department, based on his experience working in the Chicago Police Department for over 30 years, and, you know, I think he's, he's been doing that in small bites. And of course, there's, you know, people don't like change, and there's going to be pushback, but again, I, you know, I don't know if other council members are, have, have had problems or complaints from anybody, so I guess, I don't know why this seems to be a problem when it's, I don't see a problem.
Yeah. I have to agree with you, Alderman McIver, and Alderman Seifert was not specific in his email regarding where he was hearing these rumors, so, and I would be concerned if he was hearing something from a resident that we get right to them.
Specific question that came to me was exactly sort of how I posed it earlier, that with the introduction of the power shift, and with the policing of community park, are we staffing more police officers than we used to?
But from where did that rumor come from?
Somebody I was talking to.
Well, was it a police officer?
No, it was not.
It was not a police officer?
No, it was not.
I know you're good friends with some of the police officers, so-
But it was not, it was a simple question asked me.
Very good, okay.
And honestly, I don't even remember how we got to the topic.
Because if there was a concern, we would want that to be reported right to the police department, so it could be addressed right away.
So that was the question asked. Actually, it was, the question asked was, are we staffing more than we used to? And I said, well, not to my knowledge, we're not. Right, so, and again, when we start with a paradigm of X maybe Y, I still think there should be some minimums and maximums.
Well, yeah, you just can't wrap your arms around the new, the new way of staffing.
Well, it's not, not me grasping my arms around, I just don't agree with it. I understand what, you know, what you're saying, but I don't agree with it. I think there should be-
So you would like to have five officers on the street at three, at three to seven?
That's exactly not, that's completely not what I said. I never said five was a good number. I said there should be some minimums and maximums. I don't know what that number is, but I think there should be a number, okay? And just to leave it up to each individual shift, I don't think that's good policy.
Well, I think, I think what the chief has done since he came on board is empower the sergeants to take on a lot more responsibility. They are doing, they, in my opinion, after seeing that some of the stuff that's been going on, they have been doing a tremendous job of taking, taking control.
Can I, can I speak to that, that particular issue for just, we got some new sergeants and some incumbent sergeants, we asked, we gave them accountability, we gave them, empowered them as you indicated, we gave them flexibility, and I had some sergeants who had some people who weren't working up to their full potential. So what they started to do is using the data that we, we've been able to mine, they extracted the data and started to post it at the early part of each shift. Look, guys, you aren't making enough traffic stops, you aren't doing this, you aren't doing that. And it took people who had kind of flattened out in their careers and started to motivate them. So the sergeants have bought in to a large degree, maybe not everybody, and I'm not going to try to convince you that everybody, not, no matter what you do, everybody doesn't buy in. But for the most part, the sergeants are doing a yeoman's job in buying into a different philosophy that's alien. What I'm going to ask the council to do, and what I'm going to ask the citizens who are watching this to do, is this, trust me. The reason I'm going to ask you to trust me is this, change is difficult. Organizational change is very difficult. There's an entire body of academic study dedicated to organizational change. It takes three to eight years to implement organizational change because of internal resistance, because when you do something different that runs counter to what we've always done, it's uncomfortable. When we first started the, the strategy at Darien Community Park, I went to roll call and talked about it, and one of my officers said, first off, I wouldn't let my kid go to Darien Community Park, but it's a bad idea to put a cop there. Well, if you wouldn't let your kid go, it should be a great idea to put a cop there. And the policy, the strategy worked in spite of the resistance. So here again, what I'm asking you to do is take a look at, at, at the potential for change and trust me. I entered the ranks of law enforcement executive in 1999, and since that time, I've been affiliated with the International Association of Chiefs of Police, Police Executive Research Forum, University of Chicago Crime Lab, and any number of other think tanks, policymaking, and governing bodies in law enforcement. So some of the people that folks read about in the law enforcement and academic community, Wes Scogan at Northwestern, Chuck Ramsey out in Philadelphia, Chuck Wechler up at Perfin, DC, Kamala Harris, the Attorney General of Sacramento, of California, these folks I've sat in a room and brainstormed with, Charlie Beck, myself, Bill Bratton, were in the West Wing of the White House brainstorming on violence and police procedures. So these are folks that other people read about, I've sat in a room and brainstormed with. So I'm not making up these strategies, I'm not pulling them out of my hat or something. These are all accepted strategies and policies that people are using all over the United States and internationally, and other countries, for police departments both big and small. And one of the things I've asked is, is that, and, and we have to really be cognizant of, if we're ever scrutinized by a federal or other body, they don't want to look at us as, oh, that's a little, small police department, it's Darien, this is a police department that should be governed along the same policies and strategies that the Chicago Police Department, the New York Police Department, or a, a two-person police department in Oklahoma. So what I'm going to ask you to do is, is, is trust that, number one, I'm always going to act in the best interest of the Darien Police Department, the City of Darien, and trust that the experience that you guys brought me here with is, is going to pay dividends if we, if we stick to the strategy.
Chief, maybe you, you can reiterate this point, because I think it's probably as, as critical as any of the points you've made tonight, but, you know, we all know here statistically when it's slow, we all know that we want to, you know, staff and, and provide more staffing when statistically, we're going to be busier. But can you talk just a minute about the reciprocal cooperation between us and other communities? Because if there's a time in early morning, when we're typically, something happened, we're, we're less than our norm, we're going to rely on our neighbors as they have relied on us in instances.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and I think, you know, without government thinking like that, we're going to be in trouble. We've already been in trouble the last four years, we're going to be in real trouble. So maybe just to, to put some rest to anybody who has a concern, when we're, when we're, I'll say lighter-staffed, how does that mutual aid, or fiat, or calling Downers Grove, like they call us? Because I, every day, I get a copy of the report from DuCom, and I see every call, every response we have. So I was curious then, because I do see sometimes, and I'll ask you about it, oh, we helped Downers, or, or something happened. I think everybody should leave this room, and everybody watching on TV, to understand how well that works when we rely on other communities, or they rely on us.
There is a mutual aid, reciprocal response agreement that allows us, when, if, if for some reason, our resources, no matter what they are, are overwhelmed by circumstance, we, we can call another agency in. Conversely, if that happens to them, they call us in. Last week, when the incident at, in unincorporated Darien occurred with, with the tragedy there, it was the DuPage County Sheriff's Office who had the responsibility, but their resources were overwhelmed, they needed equipment that they didn't have immediately, and we responded, and we took them equipment. A couple nights ago, there was an incident in Bowling Brook where our officers assisted in taking someone into custody there. So this, this, this goes back and forward, and I think that this is, this is what the preventive measure is in, in making sure that our officers are safe and our citizens are safe. There is a mechanism in place, should we be overwhelmed.
And in instances like that, chief, it's not to run somebody extra on patrol, if, if, if something happens and you need additional resources, that's when you use this mutual aid.
Yes, yes. If, if, if this is just, if it's just a traditional issue, a day-to-day issue, then we call in somebody on overtime, and we call them back to work, call them into work.
I, I hope that helps the council, because I think that's, you know, in, in many people's minds, when you think of public safety, you think, oh, what happens if? Well, at, at a time period when not even, not only us, but other communities are staffed low, well, what happens if the what-if? Well, we pull together and stick together and, and pull on each other as we need to.
This is, the change is very difficult, ladies and gentlemen, and, and I'm, I'm not under any confusion, I've sat on the other side of the table as, as, as the cops who work here in Darien. When, when Jody Wees came to Chicago, he was an outsider, and he talked about some things that, that were alien to us. When Gary McCarthy came, he talked about some things that are alien to us. When a new chief comes in, he asks questions that may not have been asked previously, or weren't answered the, the way they, they should have been answered. As much as I wanted to be territorial and proprietary, as, as a member of the executive branch of the, of the Chicago Police Department, when Jody Wees came in and asked questions, it made me give pause, and so I think we should all give pause. We are never so good at what we do that we can't get better.
Any other questions or comments for the chief?
I, chief, I've, sitting here just trying to take my mind around it, one of the things I've, I've heard you say since you've been here is proactivity, why you're, you know, you're going to proact, be, you know, proactive as opposed to reactive.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'm also, you know, sensitive to the needs of budget, I'm also need, sensitive needs of, you know, you know, officers and staffing. What kind of proactive activities can be done in the midnight shift, where officers running a plate, maybe getting, you know, a felon, or some of those burglaries we've talked about, where you'd have, even though you're not answering 911 calls, that those extra officers are, you know, when you see a spike of burglaries or something at certain times, you know, I mean, granted that, you know, you, we're not looking at 911 calls, we're not assigning police officers because, at that issue, but on the flip side of the coin, isn't there a way our officers can be, you know, out at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning, looking for something to, to prevent something, you know, coming down the pipe?
They, they are, and if, if, if you look at our, our discretionary activities, most of our, a significant portion of our DUIs and traffic violations are written during the midnight shift. When officers are out there, we have some officers who are really outstanding at hunting, and that's what I, one of the things that, police officers, good police officers are hunters. You wouldn't hunt deer out of season. You don't hunt people when they're not likely to be on the street. So the more opportunities for people to be on the street is when you're going to do your most hunting. And so at 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning in Darien, there may not be the same opportunities for hunting as there are at, at, between 3:00 and 11:00, or 3:00 and 2:00. So reducing the number, we're not eliminating the number, those officers who are working will be hunting, or should be hunting. And part of the discre- the, the accountability for the sergeants is to look at what's going on on the street, and if they aren't responding to calls, to make sure that they're hunting.
On the flip side, it isn't the bad guy thinking too? You know, there's hardly anybody around at 4:30 in the morning, it's probably easier for me to pop a car at 4:30 than it is-
Because see, more often than not, the bad guys work on a, on a cycle. Are you going to have some bad guy who's not working on a, on the sleep cycle that, that the bad guys work on? Sure you will. But by and large, bad guys work on a cycle. They, they, they do their dirt earlier, or, or, or very early in the morning, and then they go to sleep, and they sleep most of the day.
But I think, chief, as you mentioned earlier, if there is some instance, maybe the Alderman's example, where, where there is showing a pattern of that, the sergeant might have somebody on, and they might be specifically looking for that.
And, and, and those are the type of things that we do, but when, when we talk about proactivity, Alderman, there's a lot of ways to be proactive. One of the things that we've done is, is we've identified a certain group of offenders who are likely to commit certain offenses. We looked at their parole, probation, and, and other backgrounds. We found three guys who were hanging out together. One of those guys is a burglary to a motor vehicle offender, and he's on parole. Well, if he's hanging out with these two guys, nothing good is going to happen. So we went to his parole officer and said, hey, look, what can you do for us? So he implemented an order that prohibited this guy from hanging out with those other two characters. So now, when, if, if our cops see this guy on the street, they, in the company of these other guys, they type up a report, pass it on to the parole officer, and he can violate him and put him back in jail. Well, that's a kind of, that, that's proactive. So there's a lot of proactive stuff that we can be doing.
Are any of our officers on a, on a on-call system, knowing that sergeants can, you know, call them in, based on-
All of the officers are on a, on a recall roster for overtime.
Okay.
Based on seniority.
And I guess my last thing, and I'll shut up, is, police officer in the park.
Yes, sir.
Hear 911 call, 69th and Clarendon Hills Road. Do they have the flexibility to, to leave the park to take care of that call?
Having been in the military, as, as Alderman Seifert, one of the things we know is that you only leave your post until, when properly relieved. You stand a post because we believe that there's a high potential for something bad happening in the park. The sergeant has to make the determination whether it's clear for that officer to go, I can't stand here tonight and say yes or no, because the sergeant has to make that determination. Because imagine this, if there's a game going on with a lot of cards that are open in the summertime, or valuables laying around, somebody gives a bogus call at 69th and Clarendon Hills just to draw the cop away from the park, so that, that decision has to be an onsite decision by the supervisor on scene, but that officer should remain on post unless otherwise relieved. Probably the only exception to that is if there was an officer calling for help, or, or shots fired, or something really, really serious like that, so.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Let's move on to the treasurer's report. Treasurer Corn, you want to cover the, the two warrants?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 121325, the amount of $17,202.83 from listed funds.
That's an easy one, that's for last year's-
For last year. Hopefully, this is the last warrant related to the last fiscal year, because the auditors have completed the audit at this point.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman McIver, seconded by Alderman Seifert. Any questions for the treasurer? The role, please. McIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seven ayes. That warrant has been approved, go ahead.
Hey, also asking approval of warrant number 131404, in the amount of $1,478,999.84 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended June 13th, in the amount of $273,005.01, for a total be approved of $1,752,485.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny? Any questions for the treasurer? The role, please. Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays. The warrant has been approved. Did you want to make some comments?
I, I just wanted to inform the council. If you notice, there is no monthly report for the month of May as we ordinarily have at our second council meeting of the following month. Paul was very tied up with the auditors the last couple of weeks, so rather than rush through it, I was just more comfortable with giving him the opportunity of postponing it until the next meeting. So that's why you don't see that in the packet tonight, but we'll have it at our next meeting.
Thank you. Let's move on to standing committee reports. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that the next Municipal Services Committee meeting will be a week from tonight, June 24th, 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Alderman McIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that the next meeting of the police committee will be on July 15th, 2013, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And we have a draft of the minutes of the February 6th, 2013 police committee meeting that will be posted. Those are not yet approved by the police committee, but we did want to get the minutes at least, a draft.
Thank you. Alderman Shower?
The July 1st Admin Finance meeting has been canceled due to lack of agenda items.
Thank you. Let's move on to questions and comments, agenda-related. We didn't have a work session, so if there's any questions and comments from the Alderman regarding the two items on the, under new business. I'd like to open it up to the floor if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak to the two items on the agenda. Then let's move on to old business. There being no old, old business, nor a consent agenda this evening. Let's move right to new business. Item A is a motion to approve a waiver of the Raffel license bond requirement for the Darien Rotary Club. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belkey? Discussion? The role, please. Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays. The motion has been approved. The next item, item B is a mo, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Suburban Laboratories, Inc. for the 2013 chemical and radiological LT water sampling program in the amount of $7,813. What does the LT stand for? Oh, oh.
Level tiers, I-
Level tier two? Okay.
LT2, yes.
That's, that's enough. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman McIver, seconded by Alderman Kenny? Discussion? The role, please. I'm sorry.
Have we used Suburban Laboratories before?
Yes, we have. They're satisfactory services, yes.
Anything else? Okay, the role, please. McIver?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays. Motion has been approved. Let's move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. I'd like to thank the Wilton Company for the ribbon-cutting ceremony last Saturday. It was actually eye-opening to me. Never even dreamed that something like that could be, have the effect, the worldwide effect that it does. I, in, in the process of going through the facility and talking to some of the individuals that were there, I ran into a woman from Nigeria and another woman from, from Thailand that had been at the Wilton decorating classes for a few weeks. One was going back to Thailand to open up her own bakery, and the other one was going back to improve the bakery she has in Nigeria. And they told me this, this school changed their lives. So it was just eye-opening, a remarkable experience for me. And I'd like to thank Wilton for choosing Darien to open up their cake decorating school. Any other questions, any other announcements from the council members?
You know, Mayor, I just, I just have one. A couple weeks ago, Sergeant, or Chief Cooper, or Chief, Deputy Chief, boy, I'm bad with names up here, aren't I?
Deputy Chief Cooper, it's, it's okay.
And Chief Brown allowed me to, to ride, ride along with one of the officers for an eight-hour shift. And it was, it was a very, very eye-opening, good education. I got a chance to use some of that the other night. One of the residents had grabbed a hold of me and said, "You know, the police officers never come down my street." And I said, "Well, I know for a fact that they do." And he said, "No, they don't." And I go, "I was in a car with them when they went past your house twice, so I do know that they do go past your street, so." So that helped.
Alderman Belkey?
Could we talk a little bit about the parade? I know that the applications were due Friday, and so I don't know if everybody did that. And then I think we're under the same business as usual as last year with ordering the candy.
You know, I don't recall last year, but this year we're taking care of that. I know originally we intended including that in, in the budget for the council. It wasn't in the final numbers, so we were going to take that out of contingency.
Oh.
So we, we can send an email out to the council, short, next couple of days with the details. I believe that was the intent. I mean, we originally had talked about putting that back in.
We did talk about it, we never included it.
And I think, Alderman Belkey, I think actually you asked at the budget meeting, and I mentioned that we can do that out of contingencies, yes.
Good, thanks for reminding.
So you don't have to worry about forgetting to call staff to let them know and going out and buying your own candy like you did, what was that, your first year? Alderman Seifert?
I always buy my own candy, why I did, yeah.
Yeah, I remember, I remember you saying, "Oops, I forgot to call in my orders, so."
Well, I can tell you for years, the, the city purchased it, you know, as part-
And then we got away from that, yeah.
And then there were several years we didn't. So, again, I'm assuming all the Aldermen would like us to, we'll do that procedure this year, where we'll purchase it, and we'll have it bagged up, and then we'll send an email out, and you just come to City Hall and pick up. And just, just, again, my reminder, be cautious at the beginning. Don't throw all your candy out at the beginning because you will not have enough for the end.
I have reserves, I've learned.
Alderman, Treasurer Corn?
I would just go on the record as indicating I do not agree with the city funding that amount. I believe we cut back when the economy was hurting,